I'd like to call to order the Padgett Regional School Committee meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. A roll call. Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna. Phil Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Emily Pelzani.
Here.
Dick Rogers.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor here. Chris Redden.
Here.
Deanna Trope.
Yes, here.
We all rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I receive a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the business finance subcommittee minutes from June 4th, 2019?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the business meeting of May 21st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I think we left. Oh, no. It's the next one. Okay. No, no comment on that one.
Can I receive a motion to accept the minutes of the business meeting of June 4th, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
This is the one. So it says that we left. And I don't think it shows. I know I came back at one. You guys came back at one.
It wasn't this one. It was the one before because this one I wasn't here and the one before that I had.
Okay. Then it was the one before.
The May 21st one we left for the concert.
For the concert.
So can I? Is it possible I can rescind a motion to amend the agenda?
For me? I mean, just to-
You amend the minutes?
So which minutes are you amending?
May 21st.
May 21st.
May 21st. Deanna, did you come back?
I did come back.
Yes.
Okay. We came back during exec session or after?
It was after.
After.
It was over.
So you came back after the executive session?
Yeah.
I have it right there. Members return to open session at 7:45.
Okay. So maybe we need to say who. Three of us put our names in.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. Okay.
Oh, you know what? No. I think that members return to open session responds to we had executive session.
Yep.
And then the members in general all came back to open session. So I don't think it specifically says when we-
So you were, you came back after the executive session?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I'll add it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry. Okay.
Move the amendment.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Did I receive a-
Yes.
-motion and a second on the June 4th?
Uh huh.
So any discussion? And all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain. I was going to say any abstentions. Any public comment? None. Okay. Superintendent news.
So we don't have our student rep here, but superintendent is happy to report that, of course, we had our graduation and that went really, really well. Senior celebration followed that. That, of course, for last time, we had a successful finish to the school year. On Thursday, we finished up with a half day. And then, you know, Mr. Conway has been, the last two days, had a very good literacy program that's being done at the Bagnell for our teachers, about thirty some odd participants. So it's, what's really nice about that to me is that this is PD, it's optional, they can get it, they're giving them some credits for it, but members, from what I'm understanding in the past, are much higher than we've had in the past, which means, I think, we're seeing a higher levels of engagement of teachers in professional development against literacy. So it's a very, very, very good trend.
Anything else?
Also, Mr. Conway and I are finishing our first year, it's our last meeting, finish the year round. Yes.
You guys did a great job.
We survived.
Thank you very much. I'm proud of both of you. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is we need to enter into executive session to discuss three items. The first one is to consider the purchase exchange, lease or value of the property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. The second item is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And the third item is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. So I believe we need roll call vote to enter into executive session, and we will be returning afterwards. Wayne?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, motion?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
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 Still?
Yes.
Lisa, yes?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Emily? Okay.
So we're all back.
No.
Okay. So the first item is year-end review.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. We have a very busy agenda tonight, but one of the things, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that I think is very important, is that we look and see things that we have accomplished, not just as a district, but as schools and individuals within the district. So with the help of the principals, some of their counselors and their support staff, we've kind of compiled just a small sample of things that we've accomplished throughout this year. So I was giving this to you. I think it's always, we always know where we're wanting to go, but I think it's very important for us to look back and see where we've, what we've gone through to get where we currently are.
Yeah.
Because it's easy to spend the day, just in that day, forgetting about the past. And this is kind of funny when you go back and you're going through some of the earlier months and we're talking about amending a regional agreement, which, you know, turned into a much bigger piece, the presentations. But there's everything in here, just because there's pieces in here, I know Ben wasn't with us at the beginning for student rep news, but in here, you'll see a lot of the things that happened within individual schools, that the PTAs and PTOs, but just to kind of give the nod to all the groups that have helped out with so many items. So this is for you to go through. If you have any questions about it now, that's great. Again, not everything is included in here. These are just a, this is a small sampling, but I think if you want to take this, look at it, and come back with any questions, that'd be fabulous. Ms. Naff, we could potentially put this on the next agenda just for the public.
Questions and comments.
For questions and comments. So we'll go on to the next questions and comments of the next one, because I'd really like the public to see this as well, just so they can see all the things that are going on that have happened. It's, as a small sample, it's pretty mind-boggling.
It's a lot of good stuff.
It absolutely is. Did I see? So I think I'm missing on here. Oh, no, no, there it is.
It's the first thing I have.
Yeah. You're just above April then.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anybody have any questions about this?
Same one? Okay. The next item? This is awesome. The next item on the agenda is technology plan?
Yeah. So, so thank you again, Madam Chair. One of the big pieces you heard from Mr. Buck earlier this year, what was how far behind, just relative to the state, but definitively relative to our area we are in regards to technology. So one of the things that was noticeably empty when I came on and I was beginning to do investigations on the entry plans, trying to find out where we were, was that there was no technology plan for our school district. And if you heard, I'm going to just bring up Greg Haddon when he was talking about facilities. He had mentioned that when he came on board, there was deficits. When Greg LaBret came on board, they worked together and they started to put money aside to help address some of our facility needs. Well, one of the comments that Greg LaBret had made was that we know that there's a technology deficiency and kind of that same approach now with the presence of a plan, we can start to use to help address our technology needs. So what you have in front of you is an overview, a tech plan overview, that Mr. Buck has put together. It's, we're certainly seeking any feedback or thoughts you have. It's based on five objectives, or three-year objectives. So I'm going to let Mr. Buck take it over and just go ahead and talk about the whole plan.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. V.
You're welcome.
So, yes, just as Dr. V was talking about, what we did was we put together a little committee of teachers and educators and all that that were really interested in technology. We started working over the school year for, towards a technology plan. So what you see here is kind of an overview of the discussions that we had. Our final product will probably be ready for viewing sometime during the next school year, but what we wanted to do first was to get together some, you know, founding objectives and initiatives that we can work towards defining. And so we came up with this, this, what we see here. And, you know, I don't want to take up too much of your time with this because you can obviously look it over and ask me questions if you want, but basically we wanted to start off with a vision and we worked together and we came up with this, with this vision here. Again, just some bullet items, you know, the curricular needs of all learners, provide access to general curriculum. We wanted to make mention of the new within campus because that's going to go a long way towards really driving a lot of technology for us, we think. I did add something down here where we worked towards a use of technology agreements with students. So we broke it down into different grade levels and these were done by teachers in these grades. So they defined what they thought was most important for students to, to really focus on when it comes to using technology responsibly. So basically, that's how we did that. We put that all together. Again, it's grade seven, four through six and seven through 12. At the bottom in there, everyone, there's a spot where-
Mr. Buck, how do we get to that?
How did we get to these?
Yes.
So we had teachers that worked, for example, grade seven through 12, a group of teachers in that, you know, in that space, worked towards defining what would be the most, the message they want to get across to that group of students. There's a lot of, you know, it's basically a lot of the same things, it's just presented in a different way.
Based on their grade level.
Right.
So it's in the, in the language that they would understand.
Right. And the thought process was, this will go into a handbook where the students and the parents would sign, but also very early on in the school year, each teacher would hand out another copy and go over it with their students and say, these are the important items that you have to really pay attention to when you're working with technology, because they're all going to be carrying them around with them.
Okay. So one of the important parts that Mr. Buck and I had talked about, and this also applies in our next conversation, we'll talk about the new code of conduct, and that is the delivery, when you have information that just goes in the handbook, that's great. It's in the handbook. Nobody knows. And we talked about this with policies. We're making all these adjustments to policies. That's wonderful. Nobody knows. So we've had a lot of brainstorming about how do we get this information out? And when it comes to the technology and the code of conduct, this is where we're talking about, you put together like a little module that you go through, students can follow in, at their level. So if I'm in third grade, it's not presenting high technology terms to me, but it's presenting me terms that I can understand. And they go through and they do that module, or the teacher goes over with them, or there's videos. It's the same thing with the code of conduct, because we need to make sure, not just that at day one when we start teaching, and you need to set expectations. So when it comes to technology, you need to set the expectations of what is proper use, what's reasonable use, and what's not reasonable use. And when you have those boundaries, you play within those boundaries. And the same thing with the code of conduct. What's appropriate behavior? What's not appropriate behavior? And in both of those, you'll see a thematic in this entire process. One other question for you, Mr. Buck.
Sure.
On this, this plan, you've gone through some details here. If I wanted to locate this, it looks like you have this digitally located somewhere?
Yes. So it is right on homepage of the website on your school page, right here. So if you're on our website and you go homepage, the district website, I can put it on every, and I will, I'll put it on every school's front page as well. And you just click on that and you have this example.
And this, just, so you all, everyone here understands, this is live right now. Is that correct, Mr. Buck?
Yes.
So this is live right now.
Mm-hmm.
But that, we can go through, and this, the intent of this, as it will be with our school improvement plan, is to make it a live document. So as we go through, we finish things, we mark those off, as we see needs, we can add them as long as it fits within those five objectives that we can go ahead and make changes. So go ahead.
It's definitely a living document because, you know, how are we supposed to know where we're going to be technology-wise two years from now, one, even one year from now? It's going to be changing. And as requirements are going to change, financing is going to change. We could get a grant that's going to allow us to do a whole bunch of things year one. Well, guess what? We're going to do them all year one.
And one other important part, like the technology changing, I forgot to mention this in the superintendent's news, but all teachers, all classroom teachers and special ed teachers were allowed to take home a Chromebook. So now everyone has, all teachers have access to a Chromebook. So it's one to one. And that is a big game changer in terms of, it's nice that they have the technology. Elementary teachers had nothing to take home with them. A lot of high school teachers didn't have anything to take home with them. So now they're able to see and be able to use some of the tools that the students use so we can start moving in that direction. But that had, that just happened last Thursday. Thursday was the last-
Right before the last day of school, we were able to get them in all the hands of the teachers. So we kind of pushed it real hard because that was something we came up with only a month ago.
Yeah. And so-
We had the funding and we-
And that had a huge impact on this plan, because now that you have that, it's a trickle effect to them, what the expectations become for teachers and students in the classroom.
Absolutely. So if we move down here, basically, when we look at these objectives and initiatives, the first two are basically centered around educator tools and what they can, what they can learn and do to bring to the students. The third one, the objective number three, is more geared towards students learning and becoming more competent with technology. The third, the fourth deals with the Infinite Campus Student Information System. And then the final one here, and there's actually a link up here, is the actual, how do we go about achieving these first four things? What do we need technology-wise to do that sort of a thing? So I put a link on there that actually goes to, this is something that I've come up with that basically goes through and has a number of goals and talks about budget constraints. So how are we going to address that? We're going to switch to, you know, switch from outright purchasing of equipment to leasing, have a more flexible budget. And it goes right down the line, you know, how do we improve infrastructure? How do we get more devices in the hands of students? That sort of thing. So that one is pretty much almost a free document. Again, it's very clearly, what I think we're going to be able to achieve on the first year, we might not. Maybe we'll be able to do more. So we're going to be changing this as we go. And then as we, as we put on the document, basically, the strategic initiatives are, what are the steps that are going to allow us to have some positive outcomes? So for instance, the, you know, we take goal number one, that each school is getting these professional development workshops to develop, professional development workshops to acquire necessary skills. Year one, year two, year three, what kind of KU we offer, you know, just goes down along the line here, just with, you know, ideas of goals of how we can get to the very end. And then at the end of the document, we have some outcomes. So I guess you could say this is kind of like the most important part. You know, what do we expect to do with all of this? So I basically wrote down six of these and, you know, basically I started off with what we would expect for our students. So all of these students will become successful 21st century learners, starting incorporating with four Cs, creative thinking, creativity, collaboration, communications. They're going to have the ability to aptly demonstrate proficiency and four digital literacy standards. And those literacy standards are actually part of number three. Computing systems, computational thinking, advanced computer and technology skills, all that. And then the fourth thing is geared more, more towards the educators. So you take the combination of a one-to-one technology and then ever-increasing educator technology skills are going to ensure it's a successful transition to a blended learning environment where they're going to, you know, everything's going to be nice and a nice flow. There's going to be, technology is going to be used, there's going to be traditional learning, teaching tools also being utilized into a nice package. And then I wanted to make a point about the, using the student information system. You know, my thought is it's going to streamline and simplify so many functions that it's going to allow educators more time to teach and it's going to allow students more time to learn and parents to be better informed, and it's going to facilitate better communication for everyone. And then the last one is just talking about continual investment, the, you know, the basics of technology, the structure of devices and the staffing that'll ensure that the district will have the ability to fulfill all of its technology goal and outcomes. And that's what we've got.
So before we go into questions, I just want to, the importance of this plan, I think, is best explained. We live in, obviously, a technology era. It's Redden and I, we have, people have their laptops, they've got their iPads. So in our school district, where we're one-to-one essentially grades four through 12, four, five, and six typically was funded by the PTA, PTOs, we're under no obligation to do so, but have done so because we've not invested into our technology. But if our entire district, we have three people helping out with technology. Three. So you have Mr. Buck, who is the director of technology, and there's two other techs that help with repairs and some infrastructure. We, there is no model in place here where we have professional development sessions where there's someone going around, a curriculum coach or a tech coach, going around, working with teachers, giving them opportunities to learn how to use different apps on Chromebooks, different programs, what's engaging for students, what's beneficial for students. That does not exist. Where it does exist is some teachers go through, they find out methods that are really effective, and they share them by word of mouth. So this plan starts us down the road of being able to tap those other resources, tap the talent we have within the district, but it's an inevitability that we will end up going to one-to-one. High school is one-to-one right now, but everyone's bringing one of their own devices and you don't know what type it is. And that causes some issues when it comes to, if you're on a phone versus if you're on a Mac versus if you're on a PC, well, you can access what you can't. So when we are in a true one-to-one environment where everyone's kind of on the same technology, it's, our professional educators should have the set skills and the professional development needed to deliver rigorous technological education in order to enhance those things, like the four Cs. I think that's always, that is what we want to see. So I think the fact that there's over twenty, twenty-five, the fact there's 2,500 students, three people handling technology, and that includes repairs, infrastructure, everything, security, all of it.
And as more towards this one-to-one program, it just puts a higher demand on our time. But not only that, the, like, the full utilization of that is going to demand more, you know, more education skill. So, you know, there's going to be a lot more workshops, but then, you know, we're going to have to include staffing of specialists that will go around and, and be a problem solver for teachers who say, hey, you know, what's the best way to do a presentation on a Chromebook? They can hold a workshop at each school to teach that skill. And not only that, but go out and learn new skills and all that. And we're lacking in that. Like, like Dr. V said, we have some more technically interested folks that do their best to try to spread the word and help people maybe one-to-one, little workshops that we hold and everything, but to really fully realize this as a true way to, you know, have it integrated into curriculum, everybody has to use it. It can't just be, it can't just be a small group of people. We can't, we can't do that anymore. So I think the plan and some of what, what we just spoke about is including in the link on the objective number five. There's more in-depth material in there that goes more into this, but yeah, it's definitely a requirement. I mean, putting the technology in the hands. There's a lot of reports out there right now, the people who jumped on the one-to-one technology at the very beginning. There's reports that it's not effective. Well, I want it to be effective here. If we're going to do it here, it's going to be effective. It's not going to be, gee, I've got this device in my hands, what do I do with it now? It's going to be something that's-
So one of the things that came up even with the, with the teachers, they get in their Chromebooks, there was a question about, well, where did that money come from? We've cut back on some positions. Why would, and I said, I explained, I said, well, first of all, this was in, this was money that was allocated for the technology budget. And within that money, we are moving more towards Chromebooks and away from PCs or other items that may need to be repaired. So there wasn't a huge chunk that was out there to spend. So it was, I think we got every teacher, special educator, classroom and special ed teacher, a Chromebook, and it was about $50,000.
Yes, that's correct. And basically, the money came up because I had some leftover budget money from leases that I no longer have to do. So before, we were leasing PCs. And so now, we're not leasing as many PCs. Well, it turned out that, and then there were some other leases that came up for some of our network equipment. And I was able to say, hey, I've got this chunk, let's find the best way to utilize that that's going to get the technology in hands, people really-
And that's our, that's our trend, is just trying to, like, with, when we, we did that grants with Quest Newbury to get that $58,000 for Infinite Campus, that helps mainstream and save us, it might be 20, 25, but it's, it saves us a lot more money every single year. That's ultimately our goal, to maximize education and minimize cost.
Does anybody have any questions so far? I'm moving.
I have a couple of questions. So I really appreciate all the work you guys have done on this. Obviously, super important. Obviously super important. And I have to say that last piece, like, we're not going to get the teachers who aren't motivated until we have some of that support because there is nothing more frustrating than standing in a room with 21 six-year-olds who are all waiting for something and your board won't turn on or it won't play the presentation. So those are the things that are going to hold people back. That's not a question, sorry, I digress. I want to know what PD we're going to be doing beyond just the Google. I can read so I can see what we're doing. You know, we did the Gmail stuff, but the, what the, beyond the, just the classroom and the sites particularly for the primary teachers. I am curious if both the parents and the students are going to have to sign off on the tech...
It's responsible use.
The responsible use policy. And I'm curious where you guys see typing fitting in with this.
So I can address some of the PD questions, some of them, yeah. So I think we actually have, we have four educators that are going to a session Thursday to, that looks at Google from all of the extensions and add-ons. So when we as educators, we have GAF, Google Apps for Education, right? So it's, and it's our house and it's all the things. If we were to hit that little waffle, which gives us about 25 different components. And for most of us, that's what we use it for, you know, the main components. But there are thousands of add-ons that we can do that do a variety of different things. And one of the things we're going to this week is to really focus on, what are the things we can add on that would be in place of or alternatives to assistive tech, for instance? And oftentimes when we think of assistive tech, we think of kids who have significant learning disabilities and are requiring the use of technology to give them access to curriculum. So take away the first part of significant learning disabilities and focus on technology that allows all students to have access to curriculum and learning, regardless of what their disability or non-disability is, just how they learn. And there's all sorts of opportunities for kids to learn that. So we're sending four teachers, a teacher from the Cottin School is providing professional development and we're going to send four teachers to it. And the point of that is, is to connect it both special ed and general ed under those UDL, universally designed for learning practices, and our D cap, our district curriculum accommodation plan. And we'll come back to you hopefully, probably in the fall with our revised D cap of what that looks like too. So that's a, that's a big part of everyone understanding what Google is, but knowing there's just, like, that's the tip of the iceberg of how, and there's things that are just free and it's applicable. And, you know, having all students have access and then for students who are learning disabled, that they have, these are specific ones that we want them to be able to use and have teachers be able to show them how to use them. So that's a big part of it.
And I would point out that even at the start of this year, when we said, we shifted, not on the list. Added, need to add to the list, we shifted to Gmail. We were not in, we went from Outlook to Gmail this year. And one of our big first professional developments as a district was helping folks understand Gmail, Google Docs. But we also recognized that people are at different levels with that. So we differentiated that professional development. For people who didn't know how Gmail even worked, they went to a session. People who already knew how to use Google Sites, Google Classroom, they went to a completely different session. So I think moving forward, we need to, we need to continue to differentiate. What we've listed here, Mr. Buck and I have talked about is, this is establishing a entry level of, by the end of three or four years, everyone in this district needs to know. Now, if you're a new person coming in, we need, in an induction program, you need to have all this real quick. I think most people coming in at this point will probably have an understanding of that, but they won't have an understanding of all those add-ons and all the extensions. But those are all pieces that the people who are, that are on the, have mastered this, they have that expertise in the extensions and those are really the folks. Particularly if you look at, if I'm a fourth grade teacher and I find a great social studies extension, whatever it is, I mean, I'm not going to know about it. So they need to share that out and we need to start collecting useful ones. And I think that's going to be an important role that Mr. Buck has moved before about.
Right, previous to doing that, what we would do is I would make extensions available for students based on teachers' requests. So it was really up to them to say, hey, I found this extension that I want to use. I go, okay, I'll make it available. There's really no concentrated effort by anyone to say, okay, now let's spread the word, you found a great solution. Or, you know what, did you even think, you know, that's a great one, but man, this one's really dynamite, we should be using that one. And you should be trying this one out instead.
So this will be...
So that's where we want to get within, you know, when we do the list and we say, you know, Google Apps and such, and extensions, it's such a generic term that it really, it's such a, you know, a budding thing now that it's just really branching out. So not, not to the, you know, not that you have to completely ignore everything else, but if, you know, there could be something that somebody's using or even paying money for that we can actually help them solve by doing something free of charge. And I don't like to pick on iPads in special education, but as we move towards an all Chromebook solution, wouldn't it be great to be able to find some special education solutions that can use that? Now, that's not saying that, you know, there's so many exceptions to that rule because there's, you know, non-verbal and being able to, you know, communicate with the iPad. You'll never replace that. But there might be some other things that we could incorporate and help. You know, starting off with the four teachers that will be going to that training and then branching off from there, what more can we investigate and find out about?
From a curriculum standpoint, the digital literacy standards, which were released about two years ago, were not something that our staff were really familiar with. And we actually first approached them in the report card revisions when we sort of brought them forward to the group and said, well, we need to put the digital literacy standards. And we really weren't familiar with those. So we've had a lot of conversations going all the way up into the high school about how those digital literacy standards are met by students and where those opportunities will be. And some of them are met by a direct class. So if you're going to meet the upper level components, it's by taking a computer science class, a coding class. But if you look at some of the lower level classes and even, even the ones at the higher level, they're embedded within a history class, within an English class. You're meeting those digital literacy standards by having opportunities to prepare a Google slideshow and present. That's meeting multiple of the Cs that you see, but then meeting various layers. So our work really ahead is identifying at each grade level, where are we providing students the opportunity to demonstrate competency with those digital literacy standards? And then where do we need to add opportunities in? Where do we need to add classes to be able to do that? And I think that's one of the components. We do have a typing subscription that is utilized district-wide, I think at third grade, to give students an opportunity to type. To what degree it fits into the curriculum at the moment, I don't know that I can really give you a good answer.
One thing that I can't say about that is, as we were discussing again, most of the people on the committee are teachers. And that was one thing that they wanted to make sure gets addressed is where do we teach typing skills? And so we've had a type, something the district pays for, a typing program that will work at every grade level. And we import all the students into it and everything so that the teachers can use it. But there's really been no block of time where they can, where they can teach it. So that's one of our objectives is where can we carve out where, you know, does it have to be a separate class? Maybe not, maybe there can be something. One of the teachers was telling me that there is a section that although you're learning to type, you're also learning about proper internet etiquette skills and things like that. So, you know, maybe we could tie them with some sort of other types of education and all that. So, you know, we have that one and we subscribe to it. But there's plenty of nice free ones out there. There's another one I'm looking at getting just for the middle school because there's some teachers that were interested in that one. You know, any, anything that's available that's going to help them learn how to type because, you know, if I take, you know, my daughters as an example, they're great with their thumbs, but to watch them go like this with a keyboard is kind of crazy. So my teen, I, you know, I'm 17-year-old daughter. It's crazy.
So just two other quick thoughts. The last technology plan from Pentucket that I could find is started in 2005. And it was 2008 to 2014 was what the plan was set out to do. That was heavily based on inventory, making sure the infrastructure existed. It talks a little bit about students, students being able to be assessed on technology. And it also had one other part that I'm missing, but it was not about students using technology in the classroom. So that, again, started in 2005, the plan was 2008, 2014. But it's been a long time.
They, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, the one other question you asked about the responsible use of that document, that's actually a policy that we taught, we're hoping that we can get to to just ratify what currently exists and bring it up as a, as a policy so we can refer just to the responsible use policy. But the policy has to come up.
I just wondered, because this is a question I'm going to ask when we get to this part too, is, is it something that parents, like, my kids have to, my first graders have to sign off on our acceptable use policy and their parents and their, you know, that they've read it and that way, if there is a indiscretion of any, you know, whether it's of the code of conduct or of the internet use policy, they can't say, oh, well, you never showed that to me?
Yeah, so, so this is an interesting conversation. Like, we've had this quite a bit when talking about the code of conduct. So a couple of thoughts immediately are, one, you know, if, we don't do this for pencils. So when a student comes in, they need a pencil to do their work. We don't say, hey, you need to sign this whole thing that you're not going to break your pencil. We just know that that whole, so if I take away that with a laptop or a Chromebook in that situation, it's, you know, you have to behave. Like, it's no different than anything else. I, I personally don't think we need to have something that goes out to sign off saying, oh yeah, that's a, especially if it's a tool cards that you use in the classroom because it's in the code of conduct. And any child, any adult that comes in the building is held to specific behavior expectations. The other part of that has to do with, you know, we, when we look at students who have one-to-one where it's taking home, yes. Then I think we don't let you take that home until we have a sheet of paper in our hand that says you understand how, what you're responsible for, how, how to use it because it's now over. I think it's not being used just under supervision of a teacher in the classroom. It's going to be taken, taken home. So if Mr. Buck is scanning through and it pops up that some student's going to an inappropriate site during class, whether they sign the responsible use or not is meaningless to me. They violated the code of conduct, there's a consequence that's coming. But that's, I think for us, again, it's more of a notification piece that they understand. There's some financial liability that they have. There's also financial liability if someone comes up and punches that window. We're going to make them pay for that window too. I think it's, it's almost like a courtesy to say, hey, we're using this technology now, just a heads up. I don't know that you can have, can a parent opt out of a student using a pen or a pencil?
I was thinking of more of the piece that overlapped the code of conduct piece around, you know, not care of materials so much as...
Poor choices.
Yeah. What you do with it.
Are there any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. So look at, if you have any, look at this, have any suggestions, please. You can let Mr. Buck know or you can let Mr. Tom later, I know, and he'll go ahead and make some adjustments.
Please ask any questions if you have any more. We have your answer.
Thank you. The item on the agenda is the code of conduct.
This is, okay, so the code of conduct. I've brought with me, or here tonight, we have the principles of all the bills. The reason why the principles are here is because early on in this year, we started a conversation about the code of conduct. Where are, what is our code of conduct? Where is it? What are the allowable's, what are the non-allowables, what are the consequences? And how consistent are we? And I think as I reported to you several times, just within my entry plan, when you go through and you have students and teachers and some parents talking about inconsistencies or there's a clear need for us to establish a very clear and specific code of conduct that gets followed, takes some consideration mitigating aggravating factors and also that we're following Mass General Law. And Mr. Kelly will tell you, a great place to find that is 37 and 37, 37H to 37H and 3/4. Two great places to go find information about discipline in Massachusetts, what's required and some things that high schools must, must put in their handbooks that we actually incorporate here in the policy. So what we have in front of us is a genesis that began in the fall with conversations and has now evolved into this pretty extensive code of conduct. You can see if you go through it in your packet, you'll see the charts. There's a lot of information about just what's expected behavior. And then it goes down into, there is a minor offenses, minor infractions. If you see that for the first one, it's a block. It breaks it down kindergarten through second grade and third through sixth. There's lower elementary, there's upper elementary. And that's done for developmental reasons. And there's a range. So your first offense, your second offense, and your third. Now always, the preference is for the teacher to be able to handle it within the classroom. So I've also, because I've gone around the tour of, the tour de Pentucket, meeting with all the teachers, we had, I had a lot of good feedback. I had a conversation last week with a group of teachers just about what they were liking, what they wanted to see. This code of conduct went over very well with those teachers. I think they very much appreciate we have this down. They very much appreciate and understand, and we all do as well, the need for us to clearly communicate out to stakeholders, to the teachers, to understand what this code of conduct is, but also what tools they have available to them versus what tools do administrators have. And the role, the teachers wanting to, wanting to play that role in communicating with the parent so that there is that, what I consider the holy trinity in education, and that is the teacher, the parent, and the student. That those three always remain intact. And if at some point an administrator comes in, those three are always in communication with each other. But this goes over, so you have minor infractions and significant infractions. And there's examples. So that's where the, and you'll see the same thing repeated for, if you go down further. I said, whoops, there's a problem. And there's the secondary code of conduct, and that's for grades seven through 12. And we felt like that was really important to establish seven to 12 because as we know, not only, for the most part, we're in the same buildings all the time. Students going back and forth between the two buildings and some inconsistencies of a middle school student coming over to a high school, the rules being different, then going back. But we need to do a good job about our, to explain to our children what code shifting is, that when you go into one environment, some rules are different. Here, we're trying to keep all those rules the same. So sure, I mean, this is a lot of information to look at. What I am working on this summer is to have, work with some teachers. All the administrators already have worked on this. They've communicated to their school councils. So they've already gotten some feedback from their teachers. But for me, I'm going to work through with the actual system that we'll put in place. So if something is happening in a classroom and the teacher's dealing with it in the classroom, that the teacher has, that that's documented. That way, if something happens, there's an office referral, the administrator's able to go back and click on, search by Justin Bartholomew, and they can see things that have happened in the classroom, the communications that have happened with them. So a more targeted discussion could be had with the child and also with the parent and the teacher. I think the teachers were very excited about this. One, the part that was missing from parents and the teachers was the quick communication. Like, if something's happened, what is it that's happened? And obviously with parents, we can talk about their child. We can't talk about other children. But these are, there's all little nuances within, within education in terms of discipline that there are things we can talk about, there are things we can't. And when we know we can't, we need to educate our public onto, hey, here's the things we're going to be able to talk about, here are things we're not going to be able to talk to you about. And sometimes that's frustrating for parents. And sometimes we could do a better job of just kind of putting the hypothetical situations to kind of give scenarios that might be similar so they can understand that we do, we are taking action. But there is a tremendous amount there to read.
It's nice to see some meat on the bones.
And you, and, and Mr. Hodges, I brought with me...
And I have a copyright.
And I have a copyright on that phrase.
Yes, it's one of your, it's on your list. So if you have questions, so if you have questions about how this was developed, the principals are all here. You can ask away, you can put them through a situation, but this summer, we know we have three new assistant principals, Mr. Conway and myself, we're gonna be meeting with all administrators, assistant principals, and principals, and we're gonna be walking through. This is a huge priority for us for next year, because it sets a culture, and it takes things off of the plates of the children, not sure what the rules might be, takes things off the plate of the educators, who are trying to get their job done with the learning, and it makes things very clear for the administrators as kind of what the steps may be. But we're going to walk everybody through steps A through Z as to what the expectation is for when an action happens, here's what we expect to see. We did that some this year, but again, communicating that out to stakeholders as to what they can expect to see is a big deal. I know Mr. Kelly and I had a conversation earlier, and he already has, a young man, I think, who's ready to put together some entertaining videos as part of a community service, whatever, but just goes through and explains what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, what are possible, what are possible consequences. And again, kind of to the tech model part, it's not enough to put it in a handbook and say, "Here's a signature page we need." I honestly don't think we need a signature page. You're in our building, you follow our rules. That's the way that works, and having the students with the set expectations and understand what those are at the beginning of the year is absolutely critical. Making sure there's a way that they understand, they're not gonna, we're not gonna go through every single one of these, but the high flyers, let's see, we had earbuds, cell phones, hats, you know, some of the common things that we see, put in all those, because that consumes probably about 60% of any discipline.
So the, the structure that it's in the process really took, sort of stemmed from a PBIS system, so Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. So it really starts with, here's what's expected before we talk about consequences in a typical code of conduct. So we really started that way on purpose, and you'll see it's a very similar layout, both in the elementary and the secondary, language obviously different at the secondary. But I think that, you know, any sort of PBIS system starts with a clear layout of expectations, which is done here, teaching of those expectations and modeling them, which the plan is to do with some direct videos and then different manners. Well, actually, when we talk about wellness, committee will show you sort of how some of that works, too, and being able to label these appropriate and inappropriate behaviors, which this does as well, so. So it really sets up that system, and then there's obviously a lot more work to do as we move into the school.
Do you have any questions?
So you're gonna be giving this code of conduct to parents at the beginning of the school year and saying, you'll read this, is that correct?
So this code of conduct gets embedded into the handbook.
Okay.
But it gets sent home through electronically to every family, and there needs, is required sign off that they've reviewed it.
So is there any way to make this so, like, there's a couple pages that you really have to read this, and everything else is kind, like, you know, it was labeled appendix, like, C appendix, D for...
Legally, no.
No, okay.
You have to, the point is that there's all this, sure, they don't have to read the expected behaviors.
Yeah.
But it's part of the whole thing, and legally, we need people to say, "Yes, I, I read this."
I'm just, you know, I'm fearful that no one's going to read this because it's so big, so can you front load the first two pages with, "This is what we really want you to get through"?
Yeah, we can say, we can say, go to the, and I would also say, we'll send that, that'll be sent out, but again, to me, it goes back to, the way we communicate out, putting it in the handbook and asking to rip out a page is not nearly enough for what we need to do. There needs to be, I don't know if it's a, if, go ahead, Ms. Puteri, please.
Well, I was just thinking, so, just like anything, and that's my thought, too, when I see this big document, is that parents aren't gonna read it, but just like you would do with elementary school children, so at the beginning of each year, I go into each classroom and we talk about the expected behavior, like a slideshow that I go through. So I'm just thinking, just this year, with Dr. Lee's videos, I mean, just the, the Snow Day video. It was, like, quick and informative, and I actually learned a lot from it. So doing something like that, it really should come from the building principals when you're talking to your community of parents.
Okay.
So just something like that, like, I would be able to make a video, you know, all the time of the summer now, with Snow Day, my assistant principal, we could make a video for parents, it could be less than five minutes, and it could highlight the important aspects of it, and we could obviously reference that it's in the handbook, but having it in the handbook is really for the principal to go back to when an issue does arise.
Okay.
Just have it documented there, so if a parent does have a question, now we have the code of conduct, and it's the same across the board for all the elementary schools, and there's that piece that, that's really, if you want time, you would actually reference it, other than over there.
And two things. One, one more thing I forgot to put on the list of accomplishments is, the Snow Day video was on there. But also, I think it's really important that that message not come from me, doesn't come from Mr. Conway, because the children in the building are gonna wanna hear from their administrators, their teachers. So how that gets crafted is, we want that to be consistent amongst the elementary schools, consistent among seven, 12, so how they decide to come up that, we're, we're still trying to figure out what the best method is. If you come into my office, you'll see a list, it's number eight of number 15 things we have to do better next year, and the question that's on there is, how do we want to deliver this in a way that it reaches as many stakeholders as possible?
Is there making it embedded in back to school, right?
Yeah.
So I just had one specific thing on the third page of this. On the third page...
Elementary, secondary, or secondary?
Oh, wait a second. Elementary, yes, elementary, the third page down, it's, it's the last bullet on the page where it says, "Do not hit, kick, punch, pinch, or touch another student," and then it says, "Don't touch another student in a way that might hurt them." Like, I don't think you should put in the code of conduct, "Do not touch another student" when you're talking about elementary school children. I think it should say, maybe, those two sentences should be blended, so it should say, "Do not hit, kick, punch, pinch, or touch another student in a way that might hurt them."
That adjustment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I have a couple, like, things that I'll pass along, just typos, that I'll send separately.
This is why, this is why we brought it.
Yeah, one of the most heartbreaking things that has happened, not only in Massachusetts, but across this country, are the number of suicides as a result of bullying, particularly cyberbullying. So I was motivated to not wait for kids to come to me. I went to all the grade lunches, and I announced, I said, "Anyone who's being cyberbullied in any way, print it, bring it to me, and I will take it to the police department." And if you're on their list, they will appear at your home around 7:00, sit down with your family and you. I had two students who didn't take my word for it, and the police were in both of their homes, and we never had an issue ever. So I was motivated not to wait, and I would encourage you to think about that, how that balances out with your style. My style is, I'm not waiting for someone to come and tell me bad things, I'm gonna try to prevent them before it ever happens.
Absolutely.
So one thought about, for the elementary schools, I love the idea of a video and coming from, but that other schools have done, and our school has done pretty successfully, particularly for the primary kids, is to do an expected behavior event sometime in the first couple weeks of school, off the first week of school, where they can, you know, you can do all of that, you know, go into the boys' bathroom, everyone go into the girls' bathrooms, you can kind of demystify, and then, you know, do that, all the good stuff you would do as a teacher, where it's, you know, role play, you know, what is the expected behavior, what is the unexpected behavior, get the recess monitors, whoever else is involved, to go through it, and that way, especially for the little kids, really getting to try it on for themselves has been really effective, so that's one way to think about doing that piece at the beginning of the school year. My questions are, who oversees in-school suspension, and why are hats and boots allowed at the high school?
Go ahead.
Overseeing in-school suspension at the elementary school, it's likely somebody that's associated with the main office. It really is, it might differ based on which town we're in, which, which school is within the town. In Merrimack, part of the day would be me. Next year, it could be the assistant principal for part of the day, it could be a parent educator who is flexibly available. Most important thing is that the child remains supervised by a member of staff, and that the child is provided with ongoing access to their education while they're...
Mr. Reno, how many in-school suspensions did you have this year?
Two.
This one, that's very important.
Very, very, very small number.
I was working...
You want to go to secondary?
I was about the middle school and high school.
Yes, middle school and high school, come on, Pony.
I'm sorry.
Sure, the middle school, it's a combination of these is principal, myself, and next year, with our schedule a little more aligned and teaming, we should have some options for some coverage for, you know, students to be engaged in the schoolwork during in-school suspension. We don't really have a formal in-school room or anything like that right now, but I'll jump in.
Yeah, we've had a few different ways that we have supervised in-school suspension over the years, and we have a few different locations that we use. At one point, we had a staff member, like, basically delegated that did that all day. We came to the point of kind of converting that into the Excel program, which, if you don't know what the Excel program is, it's a regular ed program that provides in-school support for students who maybe need organizational tutoring support. So we converted that over, and then we have duty assignment, where a teacher can be assigned the duty of being in-school, for that year, so my fourth period is my duty, and I go down and do that. This year, we weren't able to staff up every single period, so this is kind of more comfortable, to kind of fill in any of those gaps.
Any other questions, Marry?
When we're working on policy, a lot of times it comes up, that's something for the code of conduct, that's something for the code of conduct, and there's a few times reading through here that I see, review and follow our anti-bullying policy, or review this policy, this, the cellphone use policy and whatnot, but I see a lot of references to particular mass laws, but no references to our particular school policies. Is that gonna change? Is it gonna be like a, you know, when it says, "Review and follow our anti-bullying policy," are we gonna reference the bullying policy?
Policy, blah, blah.
Like, where people can find it and see...
For the actual letters. Like J, X.
This is where you can find it on the website, maybe it has an addendum at the end.
Or you hyper, you can, if it's on, yeah, just hyperlink it, so you can click on the policy, you go right to the policy, you can read it, that'd be good.
Duke?
Yeah, high school principal, John, what is the policy for hats? I used to take hats from middle school students and say, "This is not your fault. This hat does not know that it's an outside garment. I will be talking with this hat tonight, I will give it back to you tomorrow, and you will have no problem ever wearing this hat in the school again." Why are high school students wearing hats all the time?
Well, I guess maybe we just look at it as more of a fashion statement than anything else. It's, I, I sometimes will say to myself, in, like, in that period, you know, touring, if I look around, it, there's really a pretty small number of kids that really wear hats to begin with. It's maybe just a piece of, of maybe the culture of the school where we don't see that it's necessarily something that we need to eliminate. There was a period where the middle school principal came over to the high school for a year and initiated a no-hat issue here as a record. So Mr. Benagi came to the high school for a year, and in reality, by halfway through the year, he said, "You know, guys, I don't think this is as big of a deal," and he kind of backed off on it, and he kind of remained. So that's kind of the history of it.
Okay. And it's also good for a bad hair day.
You can't help but have that hair day.
Emily?
So that was my question as well. I, I understand where you're coming from, but I just disagree. I think that when, you know, we're using video cameras that are up on the ceiling to keep track of things and those kind of things, it prevents us from getting information that we need, and, by the, obviously, I don't mean the school committee so much as whoever's looking at the videos, and that safety aspect really is something that I think a lot about.
Can we go to Chris Bily?
Well, I will throw in that I was in this building for 25 years, and I had a hat rack, and the hat rack after November was never used. I, I think it's a question of clarity, you know, I agree with Mr. Seymour, you have to be consistent, if you say no hats, you know, in a classroom, there are no hats in the classroom, it's not a question of debate. So it's a question of, you know, I think, this, what this group wishes to do, and how the administrators wish to enforce it, but if it's consistent, it, it happens. And I agree with you that especially with cameras, many banks today will not, they'll have signs saying, "You cannot enter with a hat, remove it," and that's for security.
Well, it just seems like some of the stuff that's in these other places of code of conduct, also, we're saying, if you have this, you know, vape device, you, X, Y, and Z happens, or this is, you know, possible to happen, like, we can't enforce some of those things, because we don't have a person who's there all the time, and that's one of the ways we do enforcement, so it just seems like it's not helping us.
Chris?
And I was gonna kind of piggyback on that with regard to the hoodies, and how many times my daughters have said, "Well, they had their vaping product, like, right in their hoodie, and they can do it," and the teachers can't see that happening necessarily, you know, so that I even think that that might be something that needs to be looked at, because I think vaping is just, it's just exploded in both schools and...
So this is good, this is the type of feedback. So as you have this, now this, it's here, it's in the packet, so you have it, teachers have seen it, so all the feedback that we get, we'll make adjustments, and we'll get it in the handbooks for August.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the wellness plan update?
Couple things I can update you on, and then I just wanted to show you something, or if Mr. Buck can actually turn that back on, that'd be great. So the wellness committee, we met multiple times this year. We, we had a group of staff members from all levels, we had multiple parents, and we had high school students with us this year as well participate in. And we had sort of three main focus. First one was really to address the issue of vape. We held a parent night, where we had about 100 or so parents present, it was a great presentation by folks from Minnesota Partnership for Youth. That same group came in and did some student presentations, both for the middle school and high school for us, and so that was well received. We know that we have a lot more work to do around that, and actually, we can talk to some of that stuff in just a moment. We had about 20 hours of professional development, so one of the key things that came out of the wellness committee and from staff feedback was that they needed and wanted professional development around mental health issues in students, particularly at the secondary level. And so we provided over 20 hours of professional development time, both from partnerships, Minnesota Partnership for Youth, along with a few other providers as well to our folks. So that was a, a big focus. And then from that, we also ended up working with a gentleman from Methuen Public Schools, who's their director of counseling services and, and mental health services, and he came in and worked with our wellness committee, and really, at that point, we decided the best thing to do moving forward was to do a social-emotional learning and comprehensive mental health resource map. And that was really our work to really identify, so what do we have in place to address our social-emotional learnings for students and mental health, from pre-K on all the way up to grade 12? Because before, you know, oh, we need to add this, we need to put this in, and before we can really make those decisions around that, we need to know what we have in place, and, and then we need to make some decisions, what are some of the components that are going to be district-wide, what are the components that a classroom teacher may wanna be able to manage, and be able to identify those and provide those resources. And once we map that, at that point, we can make some decisions around, boy, we really don't have much that addresses the following topic, we don't have much that does this, we're not assessing for students around this topic. So those are the components that did that. So we, the wellness committee did some of the work, we also put it back to teachers, both at the secondary level and the elementary level. We're still pulling a lot together, but I wanted to sort of show you where we're at at this point as an example. So I'm gonna go up here. So this wheel that you see here is from CASL, which is Collaborative for Academic and Social and Emotional Learning. CASL is sort of the state or the national model that states are using for social-emotional learning. So using this as our sort of framework... There are five competencies. There are five, four competencies that CASL identifies for social emotional learning. Self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. That starts in pre-K, goes all the way up to grade 12. And that's at the core of social emotional learning. And then there are three structures that surround those, our classrooms, our schools, and our homes and communities. And then further down, how do we do it? We have social emotional curriculum instruction, we have school-wide practices and policies, and then you have family and community partnerships. So those are the structures down below that support the environments up above for those five areas. Okay? And if you recall, when we looked at the standards-based report cards that we put in, these were the five areas and language taken from these that were placed into the elementary standards-based report cards. So that this is the area for social skill development that not only are we, we, we want to teach kids, we're going to assess it as well. We're going to give students and parents feedback on how students are doing in developing these skills. So this is still a, a big work in progress. So there's this wheel that's a visual and what, this will end up being an interactive tool for the teachers and for parents to see. If you go down to the second part, it provides you with a little bit more detail around each one, giving you some specifics around what, how do you define self-awareness? How do you define self-management and so forth? Right? If we go back up, what we did is we hyperlinked some documents here. So we hyperlinked self-awareness, for instance, and it brings you, and this becomes our, this is our map, for instance. So, and there's one, there's five of these. And the focus here is all on tier-one or universal components. And everything is divided into four categories. So again, we've got five of these and there's four categories for each one. There's a pre-K to sixth one and the secondary one as well. And it all looks very similar, the language in, in the middle is different. So we talked about doing this in four different methods. We have school-wide practices. So like we talked about with the code of conduct and a PBIS system, that's a school-wide practice. Okay? Classroom practices that are generally implemented, implemented across the school. So that becomes, the teacher does it within their classroom, they manage and control it, it's not managed by the principal or something that oversees it. Okay? And then we have direct curriculum content or lessons. So in self-awareness, we have a direct lesson, we're going to teach the students a route about self-awareness. Or we're going to do something that directly teaches you about it. And then we have a dependent curriculum. So opportunities for students to hear about and be exposed sort of in a incidental way or an implicit way for students to learn about them. And this is the structure that we have set up. And more or less, we were able to definitely identify some components we had in place. In particular, in the elementary, you'll see a lot about zones of regulation and social thinking. So those are two curriculums that are often thought of as intervention-based, but they have, in order for interventions to work, you need a foundation level at the classroom level. So we have some really skilled educators in district for us who have prepared a full day teacher professional development in late August. Then we're going to have our, we have over 30 teachers attending. And then they're going to repeat that again for parent professionals in their release days, and they're going to continue to do it. And it's how you take those regulations, social thinking, and use it in the classroom. So that's one of those core components that we're able to get to. And as we break through this in social awareness, we do pretty well. As we dig into a few other things, we find like mindfulness, well, we don't really have a mindfulness curriculum. How are we going to teach that? We don't have everyone trained, we do have some experts. So those are the, so what comes next? Do we take the experts and they train? Or do we look to Mind Up, for instance? Mind Up is a goldie hons mindfulness curriculum and all the resources are free. So that becomes a tool that teachers could begin to use, for instance. So there's all sorts of ways that we can do that. We also know that as we go in, in particular as the kids get a little bit older, we have to address comprehensive mental health. So we have to do things like screeners, signs of suicide, we have to do, you know, we, we, the district has not done euphras behavior survey in many years, to my knowledge. So some of the conversations around vaping, for instance, led to, so no matter what we do, we're really not going to know whether we're effective or not. We need some data. So whether or not we choose to do euphras survey in the future, or whether we implement some sort of survey data around, you know, risk-taking behavior, we can do our own and we can collect our data. We're fortunate to have some conversations with some people regarding vape detection devices, which are something we'll look to do in the near future as well. But before we can really decide whether what we do is effective, we need to figure out what are our actual numbers in this district, what does that indicate? So, you know, so those are things that came out of the conversation. But a lot of this goes back to, you know, we're going to say, we're going to have lessons on responsive classroom, we need to be able to provide some training to those so we can utilize our tools. So not all this is going to happen in SNAP, but we, you know, this is, self-awareness, for instance, is a pretty comprehensive one. There's a lot of opportunities for kids to learn about self-awareness that's embedded. Some of the others maybe aren't as, as, as broad. For instance, if we went to, let's see, relationship skills. You see here, there's some components here where our teachers can utilize components that they have. So we, like, adventure, the students go on in sixth grade, so some things we identified. Secondary one, very similar in sort of layout, but you know, getting it into the four different areas. And get teachers to think of, there's school-wide, there's classroom, there's direct content, and there's embedded.
And that's the work we did.
And we have to, some cleaning up to do before we bring this to staff in the fall so they can see that. And then this continues to evolve because I think once all staff get to see it, they're like, oh, well, we teach about X, Y, and Z. We need to add that in to make sure that we're mapping and covering everything that you need to. And that was the work of, of the wellness committee. The, the future of it, really, the wellness committee would really like to continue to, and address the issue of vaping in the schools. This is a national issue. And there's no easy solution that's coming soon. So we, we're going to need to continue to work to, to address that. And that's, and, you know, and, and mental health as well will be an ongoing component for our, our wellness committee into next year.
Any questions?
I don't know if you said this, but can you tell me who serves on the wellness committee? I may have missed that at the beginning.
So I, I don't know that I can think of the names off the top of my head. But we have several teachers, both from secondary level, lower level, Mr. Thornton serves on it. We have a couple of parents and we actually had two high school students who served on it this year as well. So. And I think that structure worked pretty well. We ended up meeting on Monday afternoons, it was the first Monday or second, I'll have to look at the calendar what it was. And we hope to do some more parent-oriented events next year, probably up to three. We really only did one this year focused on vaping, but we'll look to do up to three parent-oriented events for next year too.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the J policies. So some of these are up for a second reading in previous meetings, so we're going to need to vote on all of them. I think I'm going to ask for a vote on each one individually, and if there's discussion, we'll do it then versus doing it as a whole. The first one is JFBV school choice and a motion to a sec.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
So my only issue with this is that it still, it says the cost of tuition for non-resident students will be set forth by the Commonwealth. Where I don't know if it really is the cost of tuition, it's more the reimbursement rate perhaps than the cost. It's, it's a minor point, we don't.
Well, yeah, so I think it's, it's a great point because one of the parts, I think we talked about this last time.
We did.
The cost for us to educate a child varies from student to student. We talk about per pupil expenditure. We know at Batucket, it's just over $16,000 is our average. We only get reimbursed $5,000.
Right.
So I, I have no.
I have a note that we changed, I don't know why it didn't come across because I made the edits, but that we changed will be set to be borne by the, by the Commonwealth. The cost of tuition for non-resident students will be borne by the Commonwealth. I guess someone asked for that note.
Does that change it?
I mean, overall, it still implies that the Commonwealth is paying the entire cost of tuition. And the, the reason why we moved away from school choice is because we are not getting compensated the cost of tuition. You know, we don't have, we're not doing this right now. But I think for going down the road, when you're talking about changes in school committee composition and, and parents and potential, and superintendents or whatever, I think it's just a good reminder to people that the cost of tuition is not covered by the state. And that's the problem we have with the school choice.
So I'm going to try to wordsmith this way.
Sure.
See if, would it be possible to get JFBV to go through if we changed it to?
Well, the A probably should be changed.
The rate of reimbursement to?
Not even, just the rates for non-resident students will be set. Because then we don't have control over students who leave, but we also don't have control over the amount of them coming back.
How about the rate of reimbursement for non-students, non-stu, non-resident students attending Batucket will be set by the Commonwealth?
But you almost have to do it both ways. Yes, I think if you just changed cost, like Chris is saying, just change cost to rate of reimbursement. Yeah, rate of reimbursement. The rate of reimbursement for non-resident students will be set by the Commonwealth. So I think I have to amend the motion that's on the floor, so I'll. No, I think you can just do as amended, just so to approve this as amended. Yeah, I think there has to be a motion, there has to be a motion in a second on the amended motion.
So do we have a motion to amend the JFBV school choice, section A, cost of tuition, number one, to read as, "The rate of reimbursement for non-resident students will be set by the Commonwealth, Massachusetts, in accordance with the law."
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. We're missing an "of."
I agree, I just read it as.
Okay, no, it's actually.
It sounded weird as well.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have motions. Is there any other discussion on this JFBV amendment? Okay, all in favor? The next, the next policy is JFBBA transfer of students within the district. Can I have a motion?
Move JFBBA.
Second. Okay, add discussion. Not seeing any discussion. All in favor? The next agenda, and these are, the next policy is JICH, which is alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor? The next policy is JJ, co-curriculum and extracurricular activities. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Any discussion? Chris?
So there's still that sentence that I don't like. That says, "does not prohibit school committees from allowing use of school premises by independent groups with restrictive membership." I thought we were taking that sentence down.
We did add any of the changes in here, actually. We did take that out, just like in JBBA that we, I mean, JFBBA that we just did, we modified to address the concerns of special education lottery, superintendent transportation. All the corrections were made at that meeting we had.
The, the other thing that will help move this along is this is something we did not have. In fact, there's over 140 pages of the J policies and we were missing 50% of them. So when we share the same lawyer, we took the liberty of Newbury Court's approval also being our approval. So I'm assuming if this stays just the way it is, with or without, I'm not opposed to the amendments, but I am opposed to slowing things down, particularly when we're 12, 10 to 12 years behind the other surrounding schools.
So I think what Maria's point was, is that our edits that we suggested last time haven't made it into the packet right here. Is that correct?
I don't know what I'm trying to say.
I'm not believing you.
So I can show the document because they were made.
I'm looking at JFBBA. We had that conversation about JFBBA and JFBV.
Right.
Been becoming one single. I don't see the other one.
Is it on yet? Yeah.
So should we be approving any of these at this point, maybe?
Madam Chairperson? I wasn't quite sure, my memory eludes me here, whether everybody was in agreement of those edits. Did we come to an agreement that we had voted that everybody wanted those edits to occur?
I don't think we had.
I mean, because we had some people that wanted it and suggested it, did we have a vote to say yes? We'll put that, I'm not.
One no.
Yeah, I know.
As I remember it, three of them were up for a second reading. It was JFBBA that we just did, JICH we just did, and JJ. Those were the three that were up for a second reading. Just wanted to clear that. The rest of them have not been read before, this is the first reading. Chris?
So I would say that you're true, that I perhaps was the one who wanted that sentence taken out. But I think there's, what Maria is saying is there are things that we did collectively agree to change and alter, and it went to policy to make those changes, but somehow they're not on what we're seeing here.
Yeah, I, so I'm on live, so I can see the one where we made the edits and I'm looking at JJ. And that sentence is removed. Yep. So the sentence of, "it should be noted that 603 CMR," that sentence is removed. No. The live one that I have in front of me.
And I think.
So I, I don't know, certainly for that, I can't.
Did, did we vote on removing that sentence?
But what we're saying is in general, what we've seen before isn't necessarily what we're seeing online.
Okay, but now we're on JJ and I think the only objection which we're discussing is the second paragraph. And the question that came up is, was it voted on?
But didn't this go back to policy?
Remember, did it go back to policy?
Yes, and we need these changes, I read all the changes.
Okay, but Bill is asking, did the school committee as a whole, I mean, that was put forth at the, at the last business meeting.
It's an objection or a concern, but was it an approved?
Did everybody agree to that?
And I don't call both y'all.
I mean, I understand it.
Well, I think we voted it down for that reason.
Joanna?
I was going to say the same thing like Krista.
So were there any other amendments made to JJ that we can see that were on?
The only amendment made to JJ as it was read last time was, "it should be noted" was added to line five, which was, that's what was asked for. And then, I mean, I can go through, "borne" was changed to, will, changed, but will be set on the last one that Joanna was mentioning. Student activity corrections have been made after discussions with great for JFF. On JICH, language of the policy has been changed to include age, domestic or foreign countries, and to include the word paraphernalia because it didn't cover everything that had been asked for for vaping. JFBBA had been.
Okay, I think, I'm feeling uncomfortable, so I'm just going to go with my gut here, or maybe I'm wrong. I just feel uncomfortable if these were changed in the policy, the policy subcommittee meeting. And the ones that you guys felt were completed, the policy subcommittee felt completed, did not make it into the packet. And like, I read the packet, other people read the packet. I think unless there's something here that we have to put through immediately, and we can zero-in on that one now, I'd hate to say it, but maybe we have to table all of these until all the correct ones are put through on the packet and we can meet to discuss them at the July meeting. Does that sound? Chris?
Yeah, and I'm going to say, I had a couple of points on ones that we hadn't seen yet, so I'm wondering if for streamlined purposes, if we can send those to the policy committee. Because there were a few things. Yeah.
Okay, so, so on JJ, we've already discussed JJ as a school committee. Is everybody, can I have, can I have a motion to remove that statement? "It should be noted that 603 CMR, 26061, does not prohibit school committee from allowing use of school, school premises by independent groups with restrictive membership."
So moved. Second.
That's the one we heavily discussed before, when I said.
So are we all in favor of removing that?
The superintendent was far in majority.
So one comes up for agreement again, it's appropriate, it's not going to be there?
Sure.
Can I, can I have a vote? All in favor of removing that sentence?
Yeah, removing that sentence.
Okay, so it's Chris, Dina. Okay, so it's Chris, Dina, Marie, and Emily. Okay. Those not in favor? Okay. Wayne, Dick, Phil, and what about Joanna?
I'm abstaining from this one, because I don't fully understand it right now.
Lisa?
Yes.
So I actually went and I looked at, so Newberry Port may have this in here, but almost everyone else, the actual intent of policy JJ is so far different than what we actually have in here. They're more about, we're going to offer these activities, we're going to offer these both in-school and out-of-school things, so that doesn't even fall under what they're talking about in their policies. Like, to me, this is kind of something that, I don't know why it's there, it doesn't make any sense to me compared to Wellesley, Masco, like, everyone else, their policy JJ is so different in intent to what we're getting there.
Duxbury has the same language as Newberry Port.
I vote yes. So does it pass? Does it, what are we doing with it?
Yes, it does pass.
Okay. So it passed to remove that.
Even though, I'm just going to leave you with this, even though our school committee of lawyer has already approved this language, we're going to change it anyways.
But it's our policy, so yes, we can.
No, I know, it's our policy. But that's how things slow down. Chris, we are 10 to 12 years behind on your time and your leadership. We can't keep moving like a turtle.
Lisa, can I just make, yes, Chris, okay, not, not in reference to that. So one of the things when I was going through this is, there's, one of the policies is the medication policy. I specifically remember passing the medication policy, like, and I, and I did a search, and it actually comes up in November 2010, that we actually, and it was heavily debated, because Marie Moran was on the school committee at the time, and her daughter was diabetic, and I have daughters with EpiPens. And we specifically debated the fact that students have to...
It was debated under Jeff. It was also debated when Jeff was here.
But this policy doesn't appear on our electronic policies listings, but it had been approved. So some of what Dick might be talking about, I think somehow electronically, policies disappeared, because, like I said, this is one in particular that we debated at length, because as parents, we both felt like, my daughter needs to carry her EpiPen, and the way the policy was written, she wouldn't be allowed to have it, like, in her, in her backpack if she was going to a friend's house at night, or things like that, same thing with the diabetic material, so...
Or an inhaler.
I don't, or, you know, but, but what I mean is, it's like, we talked about it, it was approved, you can find minutes where it was approved. Where did it disappear?
I don't have...
I'm looking at you, but it's not, so, so some of what you might say, this leadership issue, number one, I've never been on policies since the very beginning. Number two, I do think that there's things that somehow, when we went from paper into electronic, like, got lost in the internet.
Okay. Can I just, I have a question for Dick. So I have not been able to attend some of the policy subcommittee meetings recently. Before that, I did religiously for years. So I'm wondering why these have not been approved by the school committee, but our attorney, we've already paid our attorney to review them all?
No, no.
People we've discussed them?
The rationale was, if we're missing 50% of what everybody else has, the surrounding schools, i.e. Duxbury, Newberry Port, then why not coincide with a lawyer that we shared? Newberry Port has the same lawyer that we have, and therefore, that lawyer has already approved these updated things from Newberry Port. So if we don't have them, and we need to have them, why not save us some time?
No, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. No, we've done nothing with our lawyer on any of this.
Okay. So, again, I mean, I'm going to go back to if this policy subcommittee made, and I know that you people have spent a ton of time working on this, hours and hours and hours behind the scenes, and then that's not, that's not getting into our packet, I think that's a concern. Chris?
So another one was the policy JKAA, physical restraint of students, and that's another one that I remember having, had leading conversations about at the school committee level. We have a policy JKA, which is pretty much the same thing, so, and that I did find online, you know, so I'm wondering, like, in some cases, if we already have something that pretty much covers it, maybe it's not the same exact initials, but I don't, I don't know how we blend them, thank you.
We have been finding discrepancies. There has been duplicates, there have been, sorry. Yeah.
So when we see the duplicates, we had this conversation about the renumbering, re, what was it?
Labeling.
Relabeling.
Relabeling some of them, and just referencing, this includes policy JFABE. And so you go on to one single one, we relabeled, so it's JFABD, oh, JFABD, JFABE, and we had JFBD, JFABDD. So, so we relabeled those, because it, I don't know...
But we didn't just, we labeled them, we went based on what, numerous school districts.
Yes, absolutely, we searched to see what's...
The, what was it, the homeless policy that we didn't have at Brent needed recently? That had a J something prefix that actually applied for every other school district, say it was homeless, that was what, it was supposed to be, military.
Military.
They were all mislabeled, and, right?
Yeah, JFABDD was the military one.
So I just make mention here that I think Lisa makes a very good point, that we have policies here that might not be correctly represented in the public packet. We have the correct policies written down, we have the cross-references as well. I, I don't think it slows us down too much, because we already have the, I think, the correct language. What Joanna mentioned, I don't know if we had that exact language in the amended version, but I think if we make that change right now, so a lot of what we're discussing, we've agreed or have changed.
We're just not seeing it right here.
Right, it's just not right here, so I, I have no problem with this coming back in July. I think for us, this might be like a 10, 15-minute cleanup, and then we can continue on with our next meeting for the next two hours, two and a half hours, whatever it is, moving to the next sets. But I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Dick is...
No, I'm going to abstain.
I abstain. So we're abstaining, all in. Okay. So essentially, they're all going to come up for reading again in July, and all the ones that the policy subcommittee agreed on to let through to the business meeting.
Should we all...
Dina?
Should we have a separate meeting and just bang through, like, the policies?
I'm going to leave that up to the policy subcommittee to, I mean, I think Chris mentioned that she has questions on some of the other ones that were up for discussion for tonight. So at what point, I mean, we hope that these are all going to pass in July, but at what point do members that have questions on whether they're, it doesn't matter which ones they are, but at what point, I mean, can we discuss them? Does the policy subcommittee want to discuss those now, or are we going to try to find a subcommittee meeting that works for everybody to attend?
I'd like to clean it up and present in the July meeting the rest of the J policies, and just get J done. We have done one of 12 chapters of a book, and we need to be moving on. So I would recommend that we do the cleanup that you folks are talking about, and I think that could take 10, 15 minutes.
Marianne, at our, I know we already talked about July meeting, there were a couple of things we had to have on that docket, but it wasn't extensive, was it?
No.
Okay. I think, I don't anticipate, of course, that there'll be much coming up between now and the next meeting to add on to the agenda, because I know between professional development conferences and vacation, I think most people working are going to be, there's not going to be a lot of time anyways.
When is the next meeting? Is it the 7th or the 3rd?
July 24th. There's only one meeting in July.
Oh, the 23rd?
23rd, sorry.
It might be on the 24th.
I will be here a little bit.
Okay, so July 23rd, on July 23rd of the next business meeting, these are all going to come up for vote. Some of them are for their third reading, and some of them are first reading.
If I remember this correctly, if there's, if someone wants to stand by, cannot participate in the conversation with the subcommittee, can stand as a, and watch as this happens, I think that might be a good idea, we could let everybody know what, I think we push that out anyway, if we're going to meet for the subcommittee, we could do that.
Does that sound okay, Marie? Okay, so if anybody has any questions on the policies, they can direct them to the policy subcommittee at that time. The next item on the agenda is the MSBA votes.
The MSBA votes, the language for, you want to just...
It has to be, yes, it has to be read. We need a motion first. Is there a motion? Second. Okay, do you want me to read this? The three votes need to be read. Okay, these down here?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is, "That the superintendent for the Patacet Regional School District, the district, is hereby appointed and authorized by and on behalf of the district to execute and deliver the project funding agreement between the district and the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and any amendments thereto the agreement, on behalf of the district, and to bind the district to the terms and conditions of such agreement for or relating to a project to remedy and repair deficiencies both educationally and structurally related to the Patacet Regional High School located at 24 Main Street, West Nibery, Mass, including all costs incidental and related thereto the project."
Now, do I make a motion to approve, or can we do a...
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I should have asked for any discussion. Okay. The next one that we're voting on is, "That the superintendent for the district is hereby appointed and authorized by and on behalf of the district to make final binding decisions with respect to the project described in the project funding agreement, and any amendments thereto on behalf of the district."
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And the last item, the last one we're voting on is, "That the superintendent for the district is hereby appointed and authorized by and on behalf of the district to execute and deliver all agreements between the district and the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and any amendments thereto the agreement, on behalf of the district, and to bind the district to the terms and conditions of such agreements for or relating to a project to remedy and repair deficiencies both educationally and structurally related to the Patacet Regional High School located at 24 Main Street, West Nibery, Mass, including all costs incidental and related thereto the project, and that the superintendent for the district is hereby appointed and authorized by and on behalf of the district to make final binding decisions with respect to the project described in such agreements, and any amendments thereto on behalf of the district."
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So we're all set with that one?
I feel a little nervous, though.
It does, it's like, what are we letting him do?
Okay, the next item is the Dora and Whittier Design Amendment.
That was, that's just a procedural vote that has to be taken.
So what happened, what's happened is, the 3011, the spreadsheet that has all of the amounts of what the costs are going to be, that has been amended to account for, we've gone through, we've done exploration, all those pieces, so it's just an amendment in allowing me to go ahead and sign off to amend the total budget projects. The cost is all the same, it's just now shifting the funds into Dora and Whittier and allowing me to be able to pay Dora and Whittier as they progress through their...
3011 costs.
The 3011, yeah.
So this is not an increase?
There is no, no.
Okay, thanks.
In fact, not only is it not an increase, Dora and Whittier has reiterated to me numerous times that 146.3 is the absolute ceiling, no matter what. Is there any clarity there?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Next item on the agenda is AFSCME custodial and clerical contract, contracts.
I make a motion to approve the contracts as discussed in executive session.
Any discussion? Seeing any, all in favor?
I'm just going to abstain, because I didn't hear the whole conversation.
So that passes, Mary?
Yes.
Public comment, there's nobody there, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Second. All in favor? Marie, you want to hang up?
I'm just loving these meetings. Can't vote against it.